Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to Richland County Council's regular session on March the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. It is now six P. M., and this meeting will now come to order. First item on the agenda is the roll call. Madam Clerk, if you would, please, take the roll.
Malinowski.
Here.
Pew.
Here.
McBride.
Here.
Livingston.
That's it.
Teresa.
Here.
Joe Walker.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
O'Walker.
Present.
Mackey.
Here.
English.
Present.
Newton.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item on the agitum, agenda rather, is item two, which is the invocation that will be given by the Honorable Dr. George A. Ashford, Jr., Lead Pastor at Journey Church. Dr. Ashford, you please come down.
Good evening. Let's start our heads together. Merciful and gracious God, we ask, Lord, that you be gracious and merciful to us. Gracious and merciful, oh God, to this land that you have created and given us, to be your stewards. God, I pray this evening for those that have been appointed in positions to help lead, guide, and nurture our community in the direction, Lord, in which you have instructed, ways of justice and ways of righteousness and service. God, I pray for our entire Richland County, for every man, woman, boy, and girl that strives to work together in community for the common good, for this is our goal, given to us by you. But, Lord, we cannot do it without your help. So wherever there is lack, God, we pray that you would show us the way that we may provide. And for those of us, oh God, help us remember as well, to whom much is given, much is required, that we might always look to others' benefit as well as our own. Bless us tonight, oh Lord, in every agenda item, God be lifted before you for the greater good of our community. It's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Dr. Ashford. And at this time, everyone stand for the pledge.
As a legion.
The flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and the God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And, Dr. Ashford, thank you for that, you know, powerful prayer. Next item on the agenda is item four, approval of the minutes, specifically item four A., which is the zoning public hearing minutes from February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two. I entertain a motion.
Approved.
It's stairs. It's been moved to properly second. Any discussion? There being none. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski. Pew.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
O'Walker.
Yes.
Mackey. English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item four B., which is approval of the minutes from the regular session for the March first, two thousand and twenty-two meeting. I will entertain a motion.
I'll move second.
It's moved to properly second. Any discussion? All right, there being none. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pew.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
O'Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item five, which is adoption of the agenda. Any changes, additions, or deletions to the agenda? All right, then I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
There's a second.
Baron.
It's been moved to properly second. Any discussion? Mr. Brown, you recognized?
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, this question may have been answered. I'm not sure. I think there was a question about, uh, the item associated with chapter twelve, as to whether or not we were able to continue with that item on this, uh, agenda.
Correct. Um, when we get to that item, Mr. Brown, I anticipate a motion.
Thank you, sir.
But thank you. Okay, any further discussion? There being none. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pew.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresa.
Yes.
Joe Walker. Baron.
Yes.
O'Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item six, which is the report of the attorney, uh, county attorney for executive session items. Uh, Mr. Wright, you're recognized.
Yes, Mr. Chair, there are no items, uh, for executive session on the agenda.
Right. Next item on the agenda is item seven, which is citizens' input, item seven A., which is for items on the agenda, not requiring a public hearing. Madam Vice Chair, anyone signed up to speak?
No, Mr. Chair.
All right, hearing is now open. Hearing is now closed. Next item on the agenda is item eight, which is citizens' input. Uh, that pertains to Richland County matters, not on the agenda, but items which a public hearing is required or a public hearing has been scheduled but cannot be addressed at this time. Anyone sign up to speak, Madam Clerk? I mean, uh, Madam Vice Chair.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have one individual that signed up to speak tonight, Carol Godson. Hi, if you would come forward, please. You would state your first and last name, as well as your address, and you have two minutes.
Good evening. I'm Carol Goodson Eady, and I live at twelve zero four Clarks Road, Hopkins, two nine zero six one. Anything else?
That's it. You can go ahead and start. You have two minutes.
Okay, when I'm, I have a complaint. I live on twelve oh four. I live on the front of Clarks Road, and there's a side road that's called Wendell V. Neil Road, and it's a private road. But now that the road is poorly maintained by Roland Boyd, the people that need the right of way to get to their houses are using my backyard as a right of way. And, and I'm confronting these people about using my backyard because of the poorly maintained private road. So I, um, got some petitions from the people that live on the back of the road, and also I addressed my concern to Ms. English, my councilwoman, Ms. English, and I also addressed a letter to Roland Boyd, and I have not gotten a response from him yet. And I, I have pictures of, oh, excuse me, I have pictures where they're using my backyard to have access to get to their property. And I, I'm putting myself at risk confronting these people because everybody now is carrying a weapon. So, so I don't want to put myself in harm's way anymore about, because they are just bold now. They're just walking in my front yard, and when I'm stopping them, I'm asking you, do you notice this is private? Yeah, so I go, I said, well, where are you going? I'm going across the street. So I have to deal with people that don't care about my rights. So I need to know what I can do as far as getting this private road made public for, um, for public use. I also have this I would like to submit. So who do I need to give it to?
I'll provide that to the clerk, Ms. Goodson.
Oh, right here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, that concludes individuals that signed up to speak tonight.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item nine, which is the report of the county administrator. Mr. Brown, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the first item on that report, uh, is an item that will be presented briefly by the Conservation Commission, specifically, uh, in chapter, chapter two and administration on Article seven, uh, that deals with boards and commissions and committees. Uh, you will find later down in that, uh, chapters, here, the commission shall prepare and submit annually to the county council a plan for the protection of significant resources in the county. Such plans shall include a list of significant natural, cultural, or historical resources in the county, which are recommended to the county council for acquisition, lease, or development. A financing strategy shall accompany each recommendation with emphasis being placed upon minimizing the utilization of public monies and maximizing utilization of other sources such as grants, public donations, and et cetera. And it goes on a little bit more than that, so I won't go into those details, but, um, wanted to do that general introduction for you to understand why this is being brought before you at this time. Uh, so with that being said, I believe we have, uh, Mr. Grego, who is, uh, here, who is going to, uh, present that information to the county council on this evening.
Come down, Mr. Grego. Mr. Grego, just go to the, uh, the podium.
Oh, I'm waiting for the presentation to come up, the PowerPoint slides.
Station. Brown?
I, I think it may be some plan documents that, that reflects the plan that they need to submit to you, Mr. Chair, uh, so that they can then understand, uh, council can decide either tonight or some future time, you know, what, uh, approval they will give to the, to this plan. So that's why this, uh, I believe you may have some slides that he's saying that he provided.
Mr. Brown, well, those are the same slides.
Everything should be in your packet.
Cause I know I reviewed them, but.
Right, they should be in the packet. Everything's in a packet.
As far as council members do, any of you need to, um, I guess, have Mr. Grego, I guess, present those slides or present what you already have in your packet? I mean, I'm asking. Okay. Um, Mr. Racyo.
Um, even if, uh, Mr. Grego didn't, uh, present the actual slides themselves, I, I would appreciate hearing some color from him regarding just the, any thoughts that, uh, you might have.
Mr. Grego, proceed.
And, and I don't want to put you on the spot, so if you're not, if you, if that's not okay with you, that's okay with me.
Um, yeah, well, I had prepared to, uh, to present the slides, but were there specific concerns you had? And I'd be happy to answer them, so.
I just wanted to give you the opportunity to give your own flavor, if you wanted to offer us something.
Yeah, well, I think the, um, let's see if I, let's see if I could summarize. Uh, I would note that we are presenting an annual work plan for both, uh, the current fiscal year, fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two and fiscal year twenty-three as well. And the reason we're doing it so late this year was, uh, um, it had not been done at the proper time the previous year. And of course, that was part of council's charge. We were discussing our, our budget, the council's charge and the administration's charge. So it is the budget for two years, and, uh, um, I would just note that we plan to have, uh, the typical funding that we have for our historic preservation and community conservation grants of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. That's been very consistent from year to year. It only changes if there's been a general budget cut, or we need to carry forward funds from previous projects. Okay? Most of our funding is from the half mill special revenue fund. Uh, I think it's around eight hundred and fifty, eight hundred and eighty-eight, eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And we also have a general fund transfer in of, uh, a hundred forty-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And, uh, uh, money that we don't expend for our half mill special revenue fund contributes to our special revenue fund balance. And we use that for special projects like the Lower Richland Tourism Plan or for land acquisition. The general fund transfer in, uh, that's used basically to fund management of the thirty-eight hundred acres of Richland County land that we manage. Uh, we reached an understanding last year, uh, that, um, unexpended funds from our general fund transfer in, which after all are basically paid to have a land program plan or manage our properties. If those are not expended at the end of the year, they go back, uh, into the county's general fund. And, uh, uh, please correct me if I've misrepresented that administrative round. But I think that would be, uh, the broad brushstrokes, and we, uh, we do have some specific projects, uh, um, uh, that we have planned for this year and for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, mostly related to the Lower Richland Tourism Plan and a, uh, um, and an overarching historic proposal as well.
Questions from the body or Mr. Grego? Now, Mr. Grego, thank you for that, and please know that, uh, it wasn't that this body didn't want to hear from you, but you did a very good job, or your staff did a very good job with the slides and made it very plain and very easy to follow. And so, uh, that was the reason, uh, that I made the ask, as far as my colleagues as well, but not they wanted to actually hear a presentation because, again, the slideshow that was presented to us was very well done.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, we worked together on it. I actually, uh, um, appreciate the chance to extemporize a little.
Thank you. Thank you for your service at the county. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chair, uh, item four B. under the coronavirus update, beginning on page forty and ending on page forty-one, just a brief, uh, information for you. At the time that I presented this report, uh, for the packet, uh, Richland County was considered in the, the medium, uh, in terms of, um, the COVID nineteen reporting period in terms of the community spread level. Uh, currently, we are considered low, um, and I expect that the COVID nineteen community check tracker, as well as the COVID nineteen data tracker, if you look at the difference between those two, uh, I think you will notice right now, uh, that they're not quite reconciled. I actually spoke to the CDC and got some information as to why that would be, uh, the case. Uh, they did explain that part of it is time periods between how they receive information, uh, the rolling seven-day period, and the other part of that is also, uh, just if you look at the dates in which they actually, uh, track that information. Uh, but, uh, in short, if you look at the data that's actually provided in your packet, and I can walk you through how they got the numbers, but what I would simply tell you is just looking at the hard data would show you that, uh, at the time, that these numbers would have also represented a low report. Uh, but it was, again, a matter of timing in terms of how they present information. Uh, so just wanted to bring that to your attention. Um, so we hope that we'll continue in that trend. Um, and as you see laid out in the report, it shows you how you get to that specific information. So if you want to walk down and look at that, uh, you can see how you get to those numbers. Um, I can certainly walk you through Richland County's numbers if you wanted me to, uh, just let me know later on. But, uh, want to let you know that we are considered in a low level, uh, in terms of spread at this point in time. Uh, also, you have on page forty-one, you have the COVID nineteen vaccine dashboard. Again, at the time this information was provided, you see that at Richland County was roughly about fifty-seven point six percent of residents who had eligible vaccinated had completed their vaccination. Uh, and at the time of this report, fifty-three point seven percent of the entire South Carolina residency. So, uh, that's specifically the COVID nineteen related update, uh, that I wanted to bring to the, the council. Are there any questions before I move on from the COVID nineteen update?
Mr. Walker, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question's pretty straightforward. Operating under, uh, the, the data that you've just provided in a low rating for, um, cases, or, or that considered, are we still considered in an emergency situation?
Yeah, according to the CDC, the low level as presented here, uh, they, at that level, just recommend that you stay, uh, vaccinated and that you get tested if you have symptoms. Uh, but that, um, the, to your, to your question, um, they don't necessarily say whether or not it's an emergency, but they just say that you are no longer required to do certain other things, or that's not their recommendation.
So with that, would a motion be in order? Tremaine to the topic. I'd like to move that we terminate the emergency ordinance immediately and resume normal operations.
There you go. Properly second. Any discussion?
That, that motion would, would actually require, um, us to not reconsider the current motion that was passed before and would not have to build a prevailing side to bring that up.
Uh, yes, we, that would mean that the current emergency order that's in effect would be terminated, but that would take, uh, I guess what was called a super majority, so nine out of the eleven would have to approve.
You're right. I think, and Mr. Livingston, you can correct me, I think the question was, uh, would it, I guess, is it appropriate for the maker of the motion to be someone who was not, I guess, on the prevailing side?
Point of clarification.
Yeah.
Point of clarification. The, uh, my, my motion pertains to the entire emergency ordinance, not just one piece of it.
Right, I understand.
So, yes.
Well.
To Mr. Livingston's question.
So, yes, Mr. Wright, that the, the maker of the motion has to be someone who was on the prevailing side, uh, when the ordinance was passed? Or, uh, or that motion can be made by anyone, even if you were not on the prevailing side when the motion was passed? The ordinance, rather, was passed.
Right, I think, I think the motion itself can be made by anyone, uh, but it would have to, it would take a super majority to undo it.
Further discussion? Ms. Baron, you recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I, I want to be clear as to what this emergency, uh, ordinance includes. So if you could please detail what all that would include, what would we be doing at this point?
I think as far as the emergency itself, if, from my understanding of Mr. Joe Walker's motion, is to, basically to declare that the entire emergency regarding coronavirus is over. So that means that all the, all the emergency things that we have in place regarding even, um, meeting, uh, meetings over electronically, that type of thing, everything would have to be undone.
And, oh, well, well, Ms. Baron, you still have the floor, and then you're next, Ms. McBride.
Thank you. And so does that include also the mass ordinance?
It, it does, the mass, the electronic meetings, uh, everything that was done under the basis of the emergency.
And, and I don't want, I, I just want us to be really clear about what is being done. So that means even the shields and our, and, and everything that we, that are, that is here is a part of that ordinance. So anything that we have done in the last almost two years as safety precautions of the coronavirus means that this motion would eliminate all of those items.
Well, it would, yes, it would undo it. I, I'm not saying that we would necessarily have to take away the shields and everything, but what it does mean is that everything that we're, from now on, that we do would not be ba, under the basis of an emergency. Um, and that may call into question some of the issues that we're doing as far as, with the ad hoc committee, the coronavirus ad hoc committee, uh, as well as some of the funding issues that we have going on.
Thank you. That's where I wanted you to go. So this motion could very well impact what we're currently doing through the coronavirus ad hoc committee, as well as funding that is associated with that.
That's correct, because if there is no longer an emergency, then, uh, there is no longer any need for any emergency funding.
Thank you.
McBride, you recognized?
Mr. Chair is the maker of the motion. I would withdraw my motion based on the information given and encourage somebody on the prevailing side to reconsider theirs.
You noted, okay? And Ms. McBride, I'm assuming that you no longer have a question?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Brown?
All right, Mr. Chair, on, uh, uh, under items, uh, for C., project updates, just want to communicate for those who may not be aware that there have been some additional remapping information sessions that have been planned, uh, and that information is in your packet, but for the purpose of those who may not be able to review the packet right now, just read these out for the public's benefit. Uh, the county is holding additional community drop-in meetings to advise residents on how their property will be zoned under the two thousand and twenty-one land development code and what that entails. Following is the schedule for some of those drop-ins. Uh, so you have some, uh, drop-ins that you will see, the closer one coming up is on, uh, Thursday, March seventeenth, Garner's Ferry Adult Activity Center. Uh, that's planned to be six P. M. to eight P. M., uh, at the Adult Activity Center on Park Lane, uh, on Mar- Monday, March twenty-first, uh, six to eight P. M. Gadsden Park Community Center on Tuesday, March twenty-second, six to eight P. M. North Springs Park Community Center, Thursday, March twenty-four, six to eight P. M. Pine Grove Community Center, Monday, March twenty-eighth, six to eight P. M. Uh, Ballantyne Community Center Banquet Hall, Tuesday, March twenty-ninth, uh, six thirty to eight thirty. Uh, and there are certainly other opportunities that citizens have to speak with our planning and zoning office related to this matter. Uh, but this is some additional opportunities, uh, that staff heard the community asked for, heard council speak to, uh, and are providing in response to that. So there are no additional questions related to that. I'll move on to the next item.
Brown? Well, Ms. Newton, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Brown, for that update, and thank you to staff for adding those additional dates. I, I think that it's necessary. I've also had different conversations with staff, and just want to mention here that while we are extending those meetings, I do think it would be also helpful if there was additional information that was published about the land development code and these proposed changes that would help our constituents. If I had to guess, and it's just a guess, I would say that eighty percent of the people probably have some of the same questions, and whether it's an, an apples-to-apples comparison, for example, if you were RU and you are now Homestead, you are generally speaking, you are more rural, or if you were RU and now are one, you're the same, et cetera. I don't want to take people through, through the code, but there are a lot of basic questions that people have where some simple communications like that would be helpful, and I would love it if we could see, um, some of those things prepared so that our citizens could, could have easier access to those things. I know they're burning up the phone lines. I talked to one staff member who got a hundred and seventy voicemails in one day, and I'm sure they're calling everybody back as fast as they can, but if some additional documentation would help, I think it would be advisable. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Um, Mr. Racyo, you recognize?
Thank you, and I'll just, um, add, it would be great, I, in neighborhood meetings, if I, there were some just simple handouts that we could, that as council members we could take, uh, to address people's questions, I think that would be super helpful.
CEO? Questions or comments? All right, Mr. Brown?
All right, two more items, Mr. Chair, under the other updates. The first is Emergency Rental Assistance Program. Uh, we are preparing to, uh, go through, uh, applications that have been previously received, uh, and go through the process of, uh, beginning to try to go out and get funding, uh, in the hands of those individuals who, uh, met all the requirements. You may recall, part of that program requires that the average median income be below, uh, fifty percent, uh, and that, uh, some of the key areas that those individuals are facing, uh, eviction. Uh, and so we're getting ready to try to ramp that program back up. Uh, and as I mentioned to the, the committee before and to the council, that we'll first start with all of the applications that we have already received. Uh, we do not anticipate being able to accept new applications until we have gone through and processed all the applications that were currently, uh, received. Uh, keep in mind that, uh, we had received over fourteen thousand applications. We were able to fund a little bit, uh, shy of four thousand. Uh, those recipients received roughly about fifty-seven, uh, five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, something around that, that amount, uh, per, uh, resident, uh, renter who needed rent, rent and/or utility assistance. So as you can see with those numbers, um, that's why we want necessarily to be able to start taking just new applications. So I just wanted to bring you that, uh, update related to that item. Um, and so I'll, I'll stop there to see if there are any additional questions, uh, about that before I move on to the other update. I move on to the other update in, in my report.
Questions or comments from the body? Mr. Livingston, and then you, Ms. McBride.
Now, since it's been a little while since some of those applications were submitted, could it make a difference, for example, if somebody's financial status have changed at that particular time, will, will account for that?
Yes, sir, we will account for that. So that's part of the, the vetting process is to go in with those folks that are in queue, find out what their status is, and their status could, could have changed. They could have gone from just needing rental assistance to now being, potentially being evicted.
But we're not just automatically taking what's on hand, that's what, that's my concern.
We're not automatically taking what on, what's on hand other than what's already in the queue.
Brad, you recognized?
Mr. Chair, it appears that everybody has. My question is the night, so.
A good thing? Mr. Brown?
Okay, so the last update, if I can pull it here, I spoke to the Voter Registrations and Elections Office Director and tried to get an update related to the redistricting process. So if you bear with me, I'm going to read the, this email because she could not be present on tonight due to other meeting conflicts. So it says, "We are currently awaiting on the error report for the State Election Commission that is provided by the Revenue Fiscal Affairs Office. That report will verify that all voters are assigned to their proper district. I contacted the SEC to check if they could expedite Richland County's error report, but we have not received confirmation as of yet. Nevertheless, this will not affect those who wish to file for candidacy. We have a system in place for those who plan to file for certain offices. We will check the street addresses against GIS and the finalized maps that we have received." Once the error report is received and those, and there are, if there are any errors, we will correct them in the voter registration system. Once we receive an error free report, we request that the State Elections Commission to issue new registration cards to voters whose precincts were affected by any changes. Voters will receive the new cards prior to the election. However, voters will be able to log onto the scvotes.gov and view their districts and voting locations. The Elections Commission does not advise sending out the cards too early due to potential precinct changes prior to an election." It goes on to say that all voters with precinct changes will be notified within a timely manner prior to the election according to the SC Code Section 77-10. Additionally, she also provided information that another county had reached out to the RFA inquiring about their, their process. And it says, "This information was provided to them as recent as today from the state GIS coordinator." Says, "Yes, I'm currently working on a set of reports specific to the House, Senate, unmatched addresses, congressional and precincts. I hope to have the entire state completed by Friday and hand it back off to the Election Commission for dissemination. However, I do not have the, it's county council broken out at this time. I hope this helps." So that was information that another county received as of today. So I've shared all that with you just to communicate that that's what the process is that's going on. Richland County has submitted everything that we need to submit, and we're just waiting on the process to play out, but that is the information that I had to provide related to that redistricting process. So I'll take any questions that I may be able to take back to the director or try to answer myself before concluding my report, Mr. Chair.
Questions or comments from the body? There being none, okay. Well, Mr. Brown, does that conclude your report?
Yes, sir, it does.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is item 10, which is the Report of the Clerk of Council. Madam Clerk, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chairman Walker. Just to let you know that we will not have a sunny public hearing on March 22nd. The next public hearing will be on April 26th. Also to let you know that the South Carolina Association of Counties has set their days for conference from August the 1st to August the 4th. Any of you attending the institute, please let us know so we can register you.
Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda is item 11, which is the Report of the Chair, and at this time, the chair does not have any updates or announcements. Item 12, which is Approval of Consent Items, item 12A, which is an ordinance authorizing an easement to East Richland County Public Service District for sewer utility facilities specifically located at the Cooper Library Branch of the Richland Library, being at 5317 Trenom Road and described as TMS number 14014-06-25. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair? Newton? I move to approve Consent Items 12A and 12B.
Okay. Let's move to properly second, okay. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Q?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
All Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton? Motion approved.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item 13, third reading item, that's item 13A. Mr. Livingston, you recognized?
I move that this item be, this item be tabled until our April 5th meeting and a public hearing scheduled.
Or second?
Second, Walker.
Properly second, that man, that is non-debatable, so Madam Clerk, you take the vote, please.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Q?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
All Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
All right, next item on the agenda is item 14, which is the Report of Rules and Appointments Committee that will be given by the Honorable Gretchen Barron. Ms. Barron, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Rules and Appointment Committee seeks approval for the Hospitality Tax Committee for Christopher Ziegler and for item two, the Richland Memorial Hospital Board of Trustees, William Garland.
Heard the recommendation of the committee. Any discussion or questions? All right, there being none. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Q?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
All Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item 15, which is the Report of the Sewer Ad Hoc Committee that will be given by the Honorable Bill Malinowski. Mr. Malinowski, you recognize, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number 15A, there are modifications to the East Richland County Public Service District Special Purpose District Boundary. That information is on pages 131 to 142. As a summary, the East Richland Public Service Group has been, has property in their area that they do not service, and in order to correct it, they're placing it in the correct servicing area. And the committee recommends approval of this.
Heard the recommendation of the committee. Any discussion or questions? All right, there being none. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Q?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
All Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Item number 15B, the Utilities Director has identified properties that he feels should be held in Rich, Richland County already owns them, but feels they should be maintained and not put on any for sale list for the potential future use of a water master plan. Those properties you can find on page 145 where it lists two properties. And the committee recommends that those be kept within Richland County for potential future use of a water master plan.
Heard the recommendation of the committee. Any discussion or questions? All right, there being none. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Q?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
All Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Item number 15C, if you look at page 148, you'll see five projects that are currently under consideration or in progress by the Utilities Department. And the Utilities Department has, has requested that they be allowed to pursue potential grants for these projects as they become aware of them. And the committee recommended that they be allowed to pursue grants if any come about.
Heard the recommendation of the committee. Any discussion or questions? There being none. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Q?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
All Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Mr. Malinowski, does any of these items need to be reconsidered?
I think that we should reconsider item A and C.
Mr. Chair?
Unless, Mr. Administrator, you think we should do B also?
Yes, sir, that was included in the packet, the request for reconsideration for all those items.
Okay. I'll move for reconsideration for 15A, B, and C.
Mr. Walker has seconded the motion, okay. It's moved properly second. Any discussion? There being none. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski?
Oh.
Q?
Oh.
McBride?
Oh.
Livingston?
Oh.
Teresa?
Oh.
Joe Walker?
Oh.
Barron?
Oh.
All Walker?
Oh.
Mackey?
Oh.
English?
Oh.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Next item on the agenda is item 16, which is Other Items. It's item 16A, fiscal year 22, District 10 Hospitality Tax allocations. I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second, Barron.
Properly second. Any discussion or questions? There being none. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Q?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Oh.
Barron?
Yes.
All Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Mr. Chair, move for reconsideration.
Thanks. It's been moved to a second. It's been moved to properly second by Ms. Teresa. Any discussion?